Good evening. It is May 17th. We're going to call the meeting in order, a special finance meeting at 6:00 PM for the Rockside Road Development Project. I'm going to turn this over to the mayor and let him talk about this.
Thank you, Council President. I believe there were other agenda items as well, potentially, in the notice.
Employee performance, employee compensation, Rockside Road project, outside legal fees, I believe. Inside and outside legal fees.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that it's just not entirely specific to that. Also in the audience today, we have our Planning Commission Chairman Ed Foley. He's been on, very much the point person. And one of our most important partners in the negotiations that are going on in Rockside. As you know, a couple of weeks ago, we went through the PDB process. We're going to have a public hearing coming up this Tuesday. And negotiations are at a critical stage. We're in negotiations on many components of the development agreement, which is a legal document. We went through this process again, and I'm going to have Ed come up in a little bit to provide a little background of what it all takes. At this stage in the game, you need a team of your different components. Ed's our, from a planning perspective, is the lead on that component. The development agreement is a legal document, a binding document between the city and the various developers. It's very technical. There is technical things with terms, in terms of height, technical terms, and terms of specific performance, legal terms regarding the tip agreement that may potentially become of it. And from that perspective, an equally important partner, and I'd almost call the equal equivalent to Ed on the legal side has been Chris Tobin. Throughout the five years we've been working on this process, she's a subject, what we would call in the industry, a subject matter expert. Okay? And at this time, we need a dedicated subject matter expert dedicated to the project. Because we can't go weeks. Like, we look at one component, we maybe toss it back, it comes back, wait more weeks. Given the timelines involved with anchor tenants, construction schedules, time is of the essence, and we need our team. Other critical members of the team, obviously, our engineer and our building commissioner, who report to me, and I make sure that they're available. Ed Foley makes about $300 a year. Actually, that's the exact number. Puts in many, many hours. For $25 a month, I consider him a volunteer, but an incredible public servant. And he's made himself available. And we need a core team. And what I'm here to talk about today is how we schedule to have that core team available on a regular basis for the immediate weeks ahead. Ed, can you come up, maybe give a little more background of what the process entails, and maybe fill in some things that I may have skipped? With understanding of the importance, the message, at least at this point in the meeting, is having availability of the core team members.
Thank you. Hard to know where to start.
Take as much time as you need. Is the microphone on?
It's on. So it's hard to know where to start, but let me just, I'm going to replay what happened in the summer of 19. In the summer of 19, we were able to execute a development agreement with Fairmount that council approved. And that development agreement was negotiated in a very compressed period of time. Because it had on a team, with a team of people, myself, Chris Tobin. We had access to the engineer and the building commissioner for pre-meetings and at the table. And the mayor would come in at the appropriate time to emphasize points that needed to be emphasized. So when we got stuck on some, he'd come in, and he sat in on many of the meetings, and he would make the point. It's what happens in between meetings that gets things done. And so in between meetings, you would have Chris Tobin and I. And when we needed to, we would access outside councils. So we had squire at the time, Kate, I forget her last name, but she was available to us, and she would review things that we would send her. It was a very efficient model, though, because I think it was, we weren't overusing external attorneys. I think that would have been a mistake. It allowed us to get something done in a reasonable period of time. And it was a good agreement. It accomplished the objectives that we needed. Now let's come to today. Since January until right now, to get the preliminary approval that we have right now, has been more hours than you can possibly imagine. There's been about nine meetings that the city has called to bring the developers to City Hall. And several of those, and always when we schedule the meetings, it's building commissioner, it's engineer, it's myself and Chris Tobin. And we bring the developers in to clarify and continue to work on what we consider to be where we need to go. That, the last meeting was Chris Tobin and I, the head of the table, and all the developers. And that's why we had to have a supplemental agreement that went with the regular agreement, because we still weren't where we needed to be. There is a very good preliminary approval, preliminary approval that's been granted to the developer right now. I'm pleased with it. I think Chris is pleased with it. But we've got to move. One of the conditions of that preliminary approval is that they can't bring forth a final development plan until a development agreement has been agreed to. So we should be working on that like right now. And when I say work on it, it means we've got to have someone in my role, someone in the internal legal role. We need to have an outside attorney available to us. We do have somebody we've worked with. And I, we've got to get this clarified and straightened out, because we cannot do what we need to do in the timeframe that we have to do it. This is, this is, we're playing with live ammo here. I mean, this is the real deal. And if we can't get things done in a timeline, we haven't, we were able to actually get the agreement that ICP signed with, with LSB. We know what their timeframe is. We know what they have to be able to accomplish within that timeframe. And if, you know, things just don't wait months. You know, as the mayor said, you have to be able to schedule. When we did this with Fairmount, we didn't leave one meeting until the next one was scheduled, and we had action items in between meetings. And it takes that degree of dedication to get it done. So the only thing I'm sharing with you is there is a formula for success. We just don't have the formula right now. I, we really got to get to the point where we've got some. My role as Planning Commission Chair, I believe, should be extended to include economic development. Because right now, I'm operating outside my role and charter. And I'm comfortable doing that, because I believe the city supports me in doing that. But I have to have a, with me as a partner, a legal person from the city. I think that's the best approach that we could take. And then it's cost-effective to only bring an outside council at a rate that we probably would be shocked by when we need that, when we need that expertise. And then we can kind of put that all together and find our way forward. The mayor will tell you that the approach that we have to take in a city like ours, where we don't have a lot of full-time people around, every time I met, you got a text. Correct?
Correct.
Every time we, we've got to stay connected. So I, we always stay connected. And we, we've got a formula how to do this. We just got to get the roles and the people in place to make it happen.
All right. So I'll, I just want to add. I think a lot of the work happens behind the scenes.
Yes.
And whatever my time commitment is, is irrelevant. We're not here to talk about me. It's, there's a substantial amount of time that Ed puts in. And that's, forgive me, that's kind of irrelevant, too. But we're at a point where we need, the main reason for the meeting today is I need to understand the process of scheduling our legal partners. It has been in the past that we just call Chris, see her availability. And she, we'd work around that, or she'd work around our availability. And a conversation with her yesterday, and appears her availability is going to be nil. And I don't like to go into all those reasons right now. But either I need her to change her position on availability, because we're heading in at a time that's time-critical, and it's going to be a good chunk of time. That's our preference. If that's not going to be the case, then I need to know the process of how we get additional legal resources. Because what Ed and I left out earlier, we go to these meetings, we're all, now at times, we're not represented by legal, and the other party has multiple attorneys. And we're at a point where we're negotiating, we're making counteroffers. And this is not typically how it even happens in cities that have an economic development team. There needs to be a lawyer present that represents the city for lawyer-to-lawyer negotiations that happen in the business development of $110 million plus. Plus, this one is complicated. So, A, we need to know that Chris is going to be available. If she's not going to be available, how are we going to fill the void? And if you have questions for me, I can answer them, but I'm looking to the law director for guidance at this time.
I do want to just follow up one point. The value that existing people play is they have this knowledge loop that we've been through. And I got to tell you, I'm just going to say, I would rather sit with Chris Tobin at the table than anybody I could pick from the outside. Because she has been through this before. We've learned about things together. And she's thorough, she's effective. I play the, my role, she plays her role. It's a winning team. The only reason I'm mentioning that is we've got to get this done in a matter of weeks and a couple of months. We don't have long, long time to wait. If this project doesn't, if we don't work on a development agreement while it's ripe, then we're not going to get the terms that are favorable for the city. And that's what I think desire is. It's not about me. It's not, I mean, it's not about Chris, in essence, we're about the city. This is really, this city's been trying to do this. The master plan called for this being done. I worked on the master plan in 2003. We've been trying to do this for 20 years. And now we've got something in our hands that appears to be the real deal, because there's the economic wherewithal for the people bringing it forward to actually pull this off. We've seen the agreements they've signed. We think they have the ability to do this. And it's at a point in time where we are not as strong as we need to be. We need to be strong right now to go into this and make this summer as effective, or more so than it was in 2019. So I mean, my, my request, if you ask me for my, my request is, is, you know, value people and their roles appropriately, and allow good people to do good work. It's, this is like interchangeable. Just shove people, you need the right people doing this. And I believe the right person from the legal side is Chris Tobin. If it's not Chris, I don't know what learning curve we're going to get with somebody to have to climb it in the period of time that we have.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Councilman Martin was first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilman Martin.
Thank you, Ed. To boil it down to one sentence, please. Based upon institutional memory, memory of the ability to handle this topic, it is your recommendation that it's, that Chris Tobin is, is the person for the city's best interest?
That would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Del Coyle.
Thank you. I have some familiarity with this subject, and I know how integral Attorney Tobin has been to the process and the wealth of knowledge that she brings to that process. I don't know that we could discuss the reasons for limited, if any, availability in an open meeting. I would defer to the law director on that subject. But if there's an issue that this, this committee and/or this council can resolve, I would strongly urge that we take a look at that and determine whether we can do anything to resolve whatever the issue is. I think we do need to hear from the law department, since she is an employee of the law department. But I don't know that that should be something that we can or should discuss in an open meeting.
Law Director.
Well, I've got some calls in to Chris to talk to her about this, and get her input and take on what we need to do, and if she has any thoughts on the best way to do that. I haven't talked to her. So at this point, I'm here to listen and understand the problems, and be part of the solution if I can.
Well, time is of the essence here. And part, I'm going to just come right out. Part of, part of what has been conveyed to me is compensation is an issue. So do we have a proposal in place, ready to talk publicly, compensation for Chris Tobin?
I think it's the ordinance that's still on the books that hasn't been passed yet.
I think we should go into executive session and talk about this. Can I make a motion to the body?
Hold on.
Yeah, can I clarify the last statement? That this proposed ordinance has nothing to do with its base rate of pay. Today's issue is about whether or not the staff is being managed in such a way that we can assure proper legal coverage. And so the ask from the mayor is real clear.
I think your microphone went off.
Yeah, I just.
But we heard you. Yeah, I believe the question's two-pronged. Are we ready to talk about the compensation? And if not, I need a, I, we need a plan for coverage. It's, it's not, negotiations are at a day-to-day situation, right at the moment. And we have not made progress on the development agreement in some time. What resources we had were dedicated to PDP. As soon as the PDP was completed, our internal plan was to turn all of our attention to the development agreement. We've not had our resource at all since the passage of the PDP for the purpose of working on the development agreement. So I need to have a Plan A and a Plan B in short order, or at least feel that we're going to have an answer soon. It's, it's no longer for debate.
Councilman Snitzky.
I just want to add my voice to Ed Foley's voice. I've sat in many zoning and planning meetings with Chris Tobin. She's a, she's a really needed resource in order to get this Rockside Road project across the finish line. And again, I've seen it firsthand, so I just wanted to add my voice to that.
So I got, my question is, Chris going to be available this week, early next week, to help with this? And if not, what's the backup plan?
Law Director.
This is the first I've been involved in this in quite some time, so I don't have your answers. I said five minutes ago, I need to talk to Chris and see if Chris can give us some guidance on who and how we can handle this situation, and go from there. But
Okay.
I tried to find out what was going on before the meeting and was unable to.
If it's agreeable to this party, I would be agreeable to short, a very short executive session. Make sure we make the right motion for performance or employee compensation.
I'm going to make a motion to consider going into executive session for employee performance and employee compensation concerning the Rockside Road project. Do I have a second, somebody from Finance?
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Del Coyle, yes.
No.
Curiousus, yes. Go into executive session at 6:20 PM. I think we should consider it. I don't know where we stand with regard to any of the prior discussions. I don't recall rejecting. But if this is what the law director is committed to, we should do a transmittal, get it on an agenda, and vote on it as an emergency, as a body. Councilman Martin?
Yeah, I absolutely want the record cleared up real clear here, that we, this council has not rejected any proposals from the law department regardless of...
It's not true. And she's upset.
Point of order, point of order. Councilman Martin has the floor.
At no point in time did this council have a presentation from the law department in an open session related to compensation. This is the first time it's occurring that the delay is on the part of the law department, not a part of this council.
Law Director, it is true. You've never, you have not spoke about on the floor.
...comprehensive plan that he submitted to me, he submitted it to you.
But you're their boss, you're the ones that, you're the one that's supposed...
He didn't have to give him a raise, not a nickel.
You're supposed to make the recommendation, you're supposed to make the recommendation and come to council. Not on the open floor, you didn't. That's the first time.
It's not true.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Councilman Delacuilla.
The record will speak for itself on that subject. This is probably not the time to consider whether or not the record reflects what's being discussed. I think we should, I propose that we should just take care of the business at hand and we can resolve the other issues later on.
Councilman Snitzky?
No, I agree with, I would just, I agree with Mr. Delacuilla, and I think that's the way I was going to say something else, but I defer to his judgment, and let's just take care of the business at hand.
Councilman Kuyu, you have any comments?
No, not at this time, thanks.
Mayor?
I think it needs to be clear what the ask is, because there's a, to me, there's a conflicting thing. I understand the request for the hour, but there's this minimum opers, which is eighty-two-hundred or something, and then there was a statement made about fifteen thousand. Is the request fifteen plus eight, or is it just fifteen, et cetera?
It's fifteen.
Flat fifteen and eighty dollars an hour. So if they're making fifteen thousand, they're going to hit their opers every month, you're not going to worry about that.
Right.
It's part of the ordinance, it's still being considered.
So it's fifteen, flat eighty dollars an hour?
Right.
Anybody else on the committee?
I'm sorry, if I may, again, are we talking about a fifteen thousand dollar salary and then eighty dollars an hour for further work? Or is it capped at fifteen thousand?
No, it's for further work.
Okay, so we're, it's, there's a flat salary of fifteen and additional work at eighty. Do we need to define that additional work? Or just...
Exactly what it is now.
In accordance with what it is now?
Yes.
Okay.
So how much of an increase is that? I directed my question to the law director. How much of an increase is that, so we know for the record?
Well, they currently make four thousand in salary, and this is going to go to fifteen. It's been suggested that fair would be twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, but all those numbers were rejected. Even this proposal has been rejected. So there's been passed out, everyone on the council, summary of the different amounts that we've discussed in a proposal that Pat Fertier put together. So I can get another copy of that to show that that's been proposed to council. But it's all in the same ballpark, and I feel like I'm just negotiating with myself.
So the recommendation is eighty dollars an hour for each of your two current employees, and that would have gender parity for the first time? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, I support the gender parity for sure. They both, both deserve similar rights.
Anybody else on council or the committee? So somebody want to make a motion to put this on the agenda for the next meeting as an emergency?
Mr. President, if I may?
Councilman Delacuilla?
I move that this committee place on the agenda a proposal to increase the flat salary of both assistant law directors at fifteen thousand dollars and amending the hourly rate for both and any other to eighty dollars per hour with an emergency.
Martin, second.
Roll call.
Delacuilla, yes.
Martin, yes.
Curie Azus, yes. Do we have anything else, any other business tonight?
I have nothing further.
Mayor?
Yes, I want to direct the Finance Director to prepare easy-to-read documents with the comparison of current salary for the two individuals and what the proposed is and the increase, so that all members of council will be very clear on what they're voting on. So you're going to make an estimate number of hours times the new rate. You got me?
Understood.
Then we need that before the agenda goes out on Monday. So Monday end of business would be, if not earlier, so everybody's well informed. I want to broach one subject today that's kind of related, but if council needs more information, we don't necessarily need to act tonight, but I'd like it addressed by council soon. If not, we've heard from Planning Commission Chairman Ed Foley about the work that's involved. He's paid three hundred dollars a year, what's that, twenty-five dollars a month? Puts in ton of hours. Our planning commission often meets at least as much as council. Oftentimes, when we have development cycles, they meet more times a month than council. You all know what you're paid. They're paid three hundred dollars. It hasn't been updated in a long time. I think it's time that we update this. I don't want to go too, I'm going to make a comparison, and we've started some preliminary research. Other communities play their chairman forty-two-hundred a year. Chairman in Independence makes thirty-three-hundred a year, ours makes three grand. Hive operate in other departments, that's just for education purposes. On the very low end, the next lowest in the area was North Royalton, that pays their people sixty dollars a month, and for any meetings over two, they get an extra thirty. So preliminary, I would propose for my committees to go from thirty-hundred dollars a year to seven-hundred-and-fifty. That's still, seven-hundred-and-fifty divided by twelve, what's that, a month? I don't have my calculator. All right, gang?
Sixty-seven-twenty.
Sixty bucks a month. It's thirty percent of what the other communities make. So that's where my head is at. And then additionally, the chairman in all these situations tends to make a little extra because there's additional responsibilities. So for planning, commission, ZBA, and civil service, I'd like council to consider raising them to seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year, and each of the chairman positions to a thousand. Less than a hundred dollars a month. It's a nice upgrade from where they're at, and it's light years behind everyone else, but I don't believe that it all needs to happen at once. But this would be a nice recognition of the work that they do and a commitment that will continue to look at the situation going forward. Any questions on that topic? If the number seems reasonable, I'd ask for a motion, and we can put this on for first reading.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll make a motion to raise the committees to seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year and the chairman a thousand dollars a year.
We have a motion, and you're the second?
Second, second. Roll call.
Martin, yes.
Delacuilla, yes.
Curie Azus, yes. Any other business for tonight's meeting?
Chairman?
The clerk, the clerk has just asked for the, is the PER statement included in that, in that ordinance? You want that in there? Because we didn't...
It's still...
Okay, so I'm going to amend the...
I will, I will make a motion, Mr. Chair, for the proposal to add the opers clause to the transmittal with regard to the emergency law directors.
So Curie Azus, yes?
Martin, yes.
Councilman Martin, you have something else?
Yeah, I did. I just wanted to know, I mean, the purpose here of this meeting tonight was to get a commitment for Ed Foley's group on the PUD taken this evening. Do we have such a commitment on the part of the law department to get resources to the PUD issue ASAP?
To discuss it with each of them, to be certain, but I think this will do it.
Council President?
Mayor?
If this does not... ...for immediate action, I'd like, and I have a Plan B, who I can start working with. And just, we want to, both Ben and I, we scheduled Greg Daniels. In the past, we had a good relationship with John Larson. I'll just, with John, I don't, I know I met the new guy who replaced him once. I don't have a really good relationship with him yet, and Greg's in Columbus. So do you want us, in the short term, to work through, or is, I'd like to... Is Greg on an as-needed basis? I'm asking, yeah, I want, I want your, yes, I want your, we schedule, Greg Daniels is a attorney with Squire Pen, this project for TIF-related purposes. Not so much expert on the other items, but he is got a, your component of what we're working on, and we'd like to add it. Can Ed schedule Greg Daniels' time as we deem necessary at...
...appropriate to my...
Assistance. That's another thing that we were here today. How do I, I don't know. It's, you determine when we need, we've really not done that in the past, but in lieu of everything going on, I just want to get real clear, so we don't end up in any kind of great territory. We need to schedule Greg to attend meetings, we need to schedule Greg sessions, we need to talk Greg and just bounce ideas off of him, Ed and I and the others on the team, and we need to do it in a real-time basis. Or Ed, contact you every time we need to, I just need a procedure. How do we get Greg Daniels to work on the project? The procedure? Am I...
I'm going to need to talk to Greg and to Jeff Daniels, or Greg Daniels, I should say.
You need to talk to an outside attorney, how we are going to schedule legal support.
To make sure that what we plan here is going to be acceptable to everyone.
Let me know.
Councilman Kuyu, you have something?
I don't understand.
We're trying to hire someone and tell them what the terms are, but we need to talk to him if the terms are acceptable and what he might need from us to be able to go forward.
Council President?
Go ahead.
Mayor?
He's already working for us. He's, you've already hired him. He's been working on the project for months. We've always had, we, Chris, on legal activities. While we're figuring out the situation, I have questions that need to be answered now, and Greg is willing to work for his predetermined rate, at least, I assume, and he's been on your payroll for months. I just want your permission that we can continue to work with them as we need them.
prepare easy-to-read documents with the comparison of current salary for the two individuals and what the proposed is and the increase, so that all members of council will be very clear on what they're voting on. So you're gonna make an estimate number of hours times the new rate. You got me?
Understood.
Then we need that before the agenda goes out on Monday. So if Monday end of business would be, if not earlier, so everybody's well informed. I wanna broach one subject today that's kinda related. But if council needs more information, we don't necessarily need to act tonight, but I'd like it addressed by council soon, if not. We've heard from Planning Commission Chairman Ed Foley about the work that's involved. He's paid three hundred dollars a year, what's that, twenty-five dollars a month? He puts in a ton of hours. Our planning commission often meets at least as much as council. Oftentimes, when we have development cycles, they meet more times a month than council. You all know what you're paid. They're paid three hundred dollars. It hasn't been updated in a long time. I think it's time that we update this. I don't wanna go too, I'm gonna make a comparison, and I've started some preliminary research. Other communities play their chairman forty-two hundred a year. Chairman in Independence makes thirty-three hundred a year, ours makes three grand. Hive operate in other departments, that's just for education purposes. On the very low end, the next lowest in the area was North Royalton, that pays their people sixty dollars a month, and for any meetings over two, they get an extra thirty. So preliminary, I would propose for my committees to go from thirty hundred dollars a year to seven hundred fifty. That's still seven fifty divided by twelve, what's that, a month? I don't have my calculator. Right, gang?
Sixty, seven twenty.
Sixty bucks a month. It's thirty percent of what the other communities make. So that's where my head is at. And then additionally, the chairman in all these situations tends to make a little extra because there's additional responsibilities. So for planning, commission, ZBA, and civil service, I'd like council to consider raising them to seven hundred fifty dollars a year, and each of the chairman positions to a thousand. Less than a hundred dollars a month. It's a, it's a nice upgrade from where they're at, and it's light years behind everyone else. But I don't believe that it all needs to happen at once, but this would be a nice recognition of the work that they do and a commitment that will continue to look at the situation going forward. Any questions on that topic? If the number seems reasonable, I'd ask for a motion, and we can put this on for first reading.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll make a motion to raise the committees to seven hundred fifty dollars a year and the chairman a thousand dollars a year.
We have a motion, and you're the second?
Second, second. Roll call.
Martin, yes.
Delaculay, yes.
Curie Azus, yes. Any other business for tonight's meeting?
Chairman?
The clerk, the clerk has just asked for the is the PERS statement included in that, in that ordinance? You want that in there? Okay, so I'm gonna amend the
I will, I will make a motion, Mr. Chair, proposal to add the opers clause to the transmittal with regard to the emergency law directors.
So Curie Azus? Curie Azus, yes?
Martin, yes.
Councilman Martin, do you have something else?
Yeah, I did. I just wanted to know, I mean, the purpose here of this meeting tonight was to get a commitment for Ed Foley's group on the PUD taken this evening. Do we have such a commitment on the part of the law department to get resources to the PUD issue ASAP?
To be certain, but I think this will do it.
Council President?
Mayor?
If this does not motion for immediate action, I'd like and I have a plan B, who I can start working with. And just, we wanna both Ben and I we scheduled Greg Daniels. In the past, we had a good relationship with John Larson. I'll just with John. I don't, I know I met the new guy who replaced him once. I don't have a really good relationship with him yet, in Greg's in Columbus. So do you want us, in the short term, to work through or is, I'd like to is Greg on an as-needed basis? I'm, I'm asking, yeah, I want, I want your, yes, I want your we schedule, Greg Daniels is a attorney with Squire Pan this project for TIF-related purposes. Not so much expert on the other items, but he is got a component of what we're working on, and we'd like at it. Can Ed schedule Greg Daniels' time as we deem necessary at assistance? That's another thing that we were here today. How do I, I don't know. It's, you determine when we need we've really not done that in the past, but in lieu of everything going on, I just wanna get real clear, so we don't end up in any kind of great territory. We need to schedule Greg to attend meetings, we need to schedule Greg we need to talk Greg and just bounce ideas off of him. Ed and I and the others on the team, and we need to do it in a real-time basis. Or Ed, contact you every time we need to I just need a procedure. How do we get Greg Daniels to work on the project? The procedure?
Am I I'm gonna need to talk to Greg and to Jeff Daniels, or Greg Daniels, I should say.
You need to talk to an outside attorney, how we are gonna schedule legal support.
Let me know.
Councilman Kuyu, you have something?
I don't understand.
Well, we're trying to hire someone and tell them what the terms are, but we need to talk to him if the terms are acceptable and what he might need from us to be able to go forward.
Council President?
Council President?
Go ahead.
Mayor?
He's already working for us. He's, you've already hired him. He's been working on the project for months. We've always had, we, Chris, on legal activities. While we're figuring out this situation, I have questions that need to be answered now, and Greg is willing to work for his predetermined rate, at least, I assume, and he's been on your payroll for months. I just want your permission that we can continue to work with them as we need them. Thank you.
Any other business, any other business or comments from council? I'm gonna make a motion adjourned at 6:48 PM. Do I have a second?
Delaculay, second.
Roll call.
Delaculay, yes.
Curie Azus, yes.
Martin, yes.
Meeting adjourned at 6:48. Thank you.